Good morning, everybody. Uh, it's nine o'clock. Uh, we've got a forum today. All three of us are here. And do the pledge allegiance and we'll get started.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, first up is approval of minutes from the March third, 2025 Commissioners' Meeting.
That says we're going to table that, so I'll make a motion to table those.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay. Old business, Commissioners' Rules of Procedure.
There's a couple additions we need to make to the agenda, Mr. President. I think the first one is, is for, uh, Nick.
Nick, open bids for two projects.
So I move to, uh, add that to the agenda, to open up those bids.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
The, uh, the second one is that I'm, I want to reevaluate the EXO's, um, contract to limit the, limit to cybersecurity assessment only. So I want to add that to the agenda today.
And that's just to do the cybersecurity?
Yes.
So, so what are we? This is, I don't understand what the, what are we eliminating?
I am adding that to the agenda, and we will discuss that once it's opened back up for that. So, so I'm, my motion is to add that to the agenda.
I'll second your motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Aye.
Now, back to old business, uh, rule, Commissioners' Rules of Procedure.
I had proposed, I don't know if you saw those this, uh, last night, but I proposed a couple minor revisions, um, that I'll discuss, and then I'll make a motion that we approve those, subject to those revisions. One is on Rule One, uh, Item Number Two. Instead of saying President, um, I'm proposing it say Board. Has to do with moving a meeting or changing the date of a particular regular meeting. And then, um, on the public comment section, we don't have connection here this morning, so bear with me. Um, on the public comments section, I'm just proposing that we revise that to be consistent with the following statement, which I recommend be made either on the agenda or be read at each meeting. And that statement is, "We welcome public comment and encourage active participation at this meeting. In order to proceed efficiently, public comment is appropriate during two areas of this meeting. First, there will be an opportunity for public comment on agenda items currently before the Board, if people want to make comment on those. And then these comments should be relevant to the specific agenda item. Second, at the end of the meeting, time will be reserved for public comment on any issue or concern that you may have. The purpose of public comment is to bring items to the Board's attention. We are requesting that comments be made concisely and be limited to three minutes whenever possible, and do not repeat comments previously made. If you want to support previous comments, you are welcome to amend that statement. The Board is encouraged to, encouraged to answer questions, but is not required to do so. And in some instances, a separate meeting with a member of the Board may be more appropriate, or the Board may want to do some investigation before responding. A high level of civility, respect, and courtesy for everyone present is appreciated." I don't know if anybody else has any other provisions, but I'll make a motion to approve the rules of procedure subject to those amendments.
Okay. Any second, Donnie?
No, I will not.
That motion doesn't carry. Any other motions?
I move to approve the, um, the Commissioners' Rules for Procedures that, that are in front of us as is.
Okay. I'll second your motion on that. All in favor? Aye.
Well, let's have some discussion first.
Okay, discussion.
So, in the public comments section, the reason I proposed what we proposed is, is we all agree to abide by the terms of the Constitution. We swear an oath. So Article One, Section Nine guarantees freedom of thought, of speech, and opinion. And, and Article One, Section Thirty-One guarantees the right to peaceably assemble for the common good. So that is the purpose, and government has no authority over people's private rights. So the reason I proposed, what I proposed is that would be consistent with those guaranteed rights. Now, if you guys want to approve rules of procedure, that, do something that you're prohibited to do, you're welcome to do that. But I will not be part of that.
Okay. I would second that we, we go forward with, as, uh, Donnie said, as we have them written in front of us. Can we, uh, call a vote on that? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Aye.
That was my note. Oops. Okay. Next up, new business, uh, Boone County Mentoring Partnership, Matt Wilson.
Uh, good morning. I'm Matt Wilson. I'm the Executive Director of Boone County Mentoring Partnership. And I am here as the President of Prevent Child Abuse Boone County this morning, along with Cassie Fraser. She's the Executive Director of Celeste's Child Advocacy Center. Um, and we, uh, April is Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month nationwide. And so, uh, we, uh, have requested that the, the county issue a proclamation recognizing, uh, Prevent Child Abuse Awareness Month, uh, to just, my, my vision is to get as many people, uh, entities and individuals, uh, on board with recognizing throughout the county our, uh, our commitment and dedication to, uh, creating, uh, the best kind of environment, um, for all children, uh, throughout the county, and promoting what we are trying to advocate for, uh, through the, or Prevent Child Abuse, Prevent Child Abuse Boone County.
Okay. Looking for a motion, or do you, are we going to do both of these at once? The proclamation or the mentoring?
Oh, what?
They're separate requests.
Oh, separate requests, okay. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Okay.
I believe the second thing on that request, nonetheless, is the, uh, in years past, uh, Brian Stevens, who, Stevenson, who's also on our, uh, in our group, uh, he's been able to work with Max to, uh, turn the, sorry, for, for turning the, uh, the courthouse dome blue for the month of, uh, April as, uh, that, for Prevent Child Abuse. That's the color designated for Prevent Child Abuse. So that's the other request.
That, we can do that, right?
Yeah.
Looking for a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, legal issues.
Okay, there's several items. First, we'll do the bids. The first is for Project Two Zero Two Two Dash Zero Seven, Boone County Bridge Number Forty Four Rehabilitation. Uh, the first bid is from Milestone Contractors LP. Sorry? Forty-four. The first bid amount is four hundred thirty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars. The second contractor is Duncan Robertson, Inc. Four hundred seventy-seven thousand three hundred sixty-eight dollars and ten cents. The final's E and B Paving, Inc. And this is four hundred eighty-eight thousand sixty-five dollars and eight cents. That concludes the bids for this project.
Which project was that again?
That last one was E and B Paving?
No, the project.
This is, uh, Boone County Bridge Number Forty Four Rehabilitation, Project Two Zero Two Two Dash Zero Seven.
We have a motion to go forward?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All?
I would take it under advisement.
Take my, uh, sorry. Yes. I move to take those under advisement.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Okay, the second one is Project Twenty Twenty Three Dash Zero Eight, Replacement of Small Structure EA Dash Zero Two One. The first contractor is Milestone Contractors. The amount is three hundred ninety-seven dollars and seven hundred, I'm sorry, three hundred ninety-seven thousand seven hundred dollars. The next contractor is Fox Contractors. This is, uh, four hundred fourteen thousand seven hundred and six dollars. Third is Crackers Demo. Uh, the total bid amount is six hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Fourth is Kindred Excavating Group. Three hundred and twelve thousand one hundred sixty-five dollars and nine cents. This one is Morphe Construction. Six hundred and ten thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars. And the final one is Codex Co. Four hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars. And that concludes these bids.
I'll move to take those under advisement.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Uh, the next item under legal is Ordinance Twenty Twenty Five Dash O Two, An Ordinance Amending Text to a Zoning Ordinance. This is for, uh, just initial consideration. No action should be taken. It's to amend the underlying text amendment for planned unit developments, to make an exception for, uh, projects that are at or near an interstate. It eliminates the, um, one thousand acre requirement down to fifty acres. The action would be to refer it to the APC for the public hearing.
I will make the motion to refer it to the APC.
Um, can I ask a question before, secondly?
Sure.
So, c- can we modify this in this meeting?
Yeah, because it hasn't been considered yet before the public hearing.
Do, do, do we want to read what the proposed changes are, or?
This is a public document that would be available for anybody who would want to see it. I can sit here and read it, or anybody who would want it can request it.
Well, so there's two, there's two things that are being proposed to be, to be revised. One is the minimal acreage, which is just an arbitrary requirement that, from my understanding, the reason it even exists is, is when the Anson P, PUD was being considered, uh, down by Whitestown. And, I mean, I would propose that we just strike that acreage requirement entirely, because it's just a totally arbitrary requirement rather than what we're proposing here. And then the second thing is about utilities. And it, it basically says that the PUD should be, it says PUD should be connected to water and sewer services and should not be on well and septic. And then we're adding that, or we're proposing to add that if water and sewer are not available to a parcel included in the PUD, at the time such proposal is adopted, the PUD shall provide a commitment to connect such parcels to water and sewer services at such time utility become available to serve the parcels. I don't, don't really have an issue with that one, or that proposal. But I, I guess, I would propose that we just strike the acreage, period, because it's just a totally arbitrary requirement anyway. But, I mean, we shouldn't be making arbitrary requirements, in my opinion.
A, a question for that, for, for everybody here, is that this is our, this is our proposal to go to the APC. The APC can change this if they choose to. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I was clear on that. So if we send it as is, they could do the same as what Tim has come up with, or if we do, Tim has, has proposed, they can still change that. I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that, that this is just our recommendation. And I'm, nothing against yours at all. I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
Yes, and this is a text amendment. So even if the APC makes a recommendation on specific language, this body has the authority to still amend it, because you can amend, reject, and adopt a text amendment.
Okay.
So this will have three, this will be heard three times.
Goes, goes to APC next, then goes to a public hearing.
At APC, yes. Then if they make a recommendation to come back here.
Okay. I understand. Just wanted to make sure I was completely clear on that of how it was going to fall through. Uh, truthfully, I have no problem with what Tim has, has come up with on, on this. No, I don't mean come up with, that's the wrong words, but proposed on this.
Is that a second?
That is a second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
So just so I'm clear, so I know how to send this to the APC, minimal acreage, there's none.
Yeah, we're just striking it.
Striking it?
Yep.
Um, the next item is Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Dash Zero Two, A Resolution of the Boone County Board of Commissioners to Establish a Policy By Which Members of the Board May Participate in Meetings By Electronic Means of Communication. In short, this allows members of this board to appear virtually, um, under certain requirements. Um, this is a, this was established by the state of Indiana post-COVID back in twenty twenty-one. There are times when one of you may need to be gone for something and we still want to conduct business. Um, or of course, if we find ourselves in a state of emergency again and need to conduct business without government coming to a halt. There are specific requirements of when we can and cannot do this. In order to do it, you have to be seen and heard on camera, not just heard.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
The next item is Resolution Twenty Twenty Five Dash Zero Three, A Resolution of the Boone County Board of Commissioners Establishing a Policy for Requests Made Under the Indiana Access to Public Records Laws. Um, this is an attempt to make requests to the Commissioners more efficient, more straightforward, ensuring we're complying with the APRA laws. Uh, this would require that requests be made in writing and to me, since I'm here. And with all due respect, the three of you are, are part-time persons. So when people are emailing you, it's harder to keep track of when we're getting requests and when we are satisfying those requests. So this is an attempt to just make this a little more efficient.
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second. And I completely agree with you, because I'll make it more efficient instead of me passing it on to you at a later date. And I, no, let's, let's make it more efficient.
Perfect. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Uh, the next item is Boone County Senior Services, Boone Area Transit System, Deobligation of Federal and State Transit Funds. Um, I was asked to present this because, um, can you forgive me? I don't remember her name.
Anita.
Anita could not be here today. Um, this shows that there is an unclaimed amount to be deobligated from FTA five-three-one-one operating funds of twenty-nine thousand one hundred sixty-nine dollars and the FTA fifty-three thirty-nine capital vehicle funds in the amount of one thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars.
Move to approve.
I'll, I'll second, but just to be clear, this makes these funds available. Will we approve this?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Okay. The last under legal there are, uh, the release of maintenance and performance bonds. I believe we're releasing two and accepting two. We're accepting Peabody East, Section Two, Maintenance for Storm Drains, Storm Drains and Rear Yard, and Jackson Run East, Section Four. And we are releasing Heritage, Section One, and Heritage, Section Five.
Should we do those all in one motion, or?
Uh, you can unless we're going to have conversation or decline one of them.
Okay. Well, I would, I'll make a motion to accept and release the, uh, bonds noted.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Next up is the Community Corrections GPS Contract Review. Mr. Nance?
I'm here. Michael Nance, uh, Director of Community Corrections. So for the first request of the, the morning is for you to review our GPS contract or actually accept who would like to change our vendor. We currently are using a company called BI. Uh, we would like to change to, uh, a company that's called Buddy. So you have that contract in front of you. There's a few reasons why, um, really kind of one of the more important ones, there's some legislation probably coming down over the next year that requires anyone who's arrested for a domestic violence case and then released on bond, that they have to wear a GPS unit. And Buddy has a specific device that they can also provide to the victim so that it doesn't just notify the victim if that person's too close to their home, but too close to them at any time. So they carry that device with them in their purse, in their pocket, whatever. And if that person were to happen to show up at Walmart while they were there shopping, they would know, okay, my perpetrator's too close to me. So that's some pretty neat technology that they offer. The physical equipment that the, the clients will wear themselves is a little bit more sleek and will fit underneath work boots a little bit better, which may sound crazy to you guys, but in our world, really matters because we end up with a bunch of broken devices because guys are shoving them down over their work boots and then go to work and catch it on a forklift or all kinds of crazy things. So, uh, the fact that it would fit the client a little bit better makes sense. And actually, it's going to be a little bit more affordable for my office. There's no cost for the county for this. The clients pay the GPS daily fee, so there is no cost, uh, uh, for the county to be concerned about. It would just mean that my project income doesn't have to spend as much every year. Um, but been meeting with them for close to three months now, and, um, at this point, feel very confident that that's the best move for our office.
So that is, uh, any, any public place? I don't know. If you're in your home and it signals, that's one thing.
Yeah, so the way we set it up is I said, if I'm not allowed to be around you, Scott, then they would set up a, a zone around your house. And if my GPS unit gets within a certain distance that we could talk about offline if you really want to know. But if it gets within a certain distance of that radius, then it notifies, first it notifies Dispatch. It says, hey, we probably have an issue. So they start law enforcement right away. That's the first phone call. Then they contact us to say what's going on. Um, and then simultaneously with that Dispatch call is a notification to the victim. But if you leave your house right now, the way our technology is, you don't have any protection. But we give you, it kind of looks like those old school pagers. You take that with you. And if you're out at Walmart shopping and I show up out there, then you get a notification that I'm there is within a certain distance of you as well.
That's a good idea. Okay. Looking for a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same. Thank you, sir. You got more?
I do one more.
Community Corrections, I D O C Grant Letter of Support.
Yes, sir. Uh, so because our, our Community Corrections Grant is actually a contract between the DOC and the county every year as part of the, uh, submission requirement, I have to have this letter from your board indicating that you guys are in approval of the grant. I sent the entire grant report to you last week. It's actually, the, the state of Indiana decided a few years ago, instead of submitting one grant, why wouldn't we break that up and make them do five? So it's five separate grants. It all goes in one package. and make them do five? So it's five separate grants. It all goes in one package. But you should have all of that information in front of you. If you're concerned about the actual dollar amount that we're asking for, it's roughly $875,000. Again, those are grant dollars coming to the county from the Department of Corrections. It makes up about a third of my total budget.
I'd move that we approve the letter of support.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next up is the CERTA presentation. Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me here today. My name is Jennifer Gebhardt, and I'm the Executive Director of CERTA, the Central Indiana Regional Transportation Authority. I'm primarily here today to just educate you guys about CERTA's three core programs that we have and how they benefit the county, all of its residents, and all of the businesses that are here in Boone County. The three core programs I want to discuss are, number one, our commuter connects program. It's a carpool program and vanpool program that helps connect people to get to work. How it works is we have a team of outreach reps that connect with, at community events and with Boone County employers, and educate them and get them registered for free benefits, such as a free emergency ride home benefit for people who carpool, ride the Whitestown Connector, maybe they bike, maybe they walk, or in a vanpool. We also work directly with employers to offer them other commuter benefits, such as vanpool subsidies, carpool parking. For example, GXO Lebanon, we implemented carpool parking signs when they were dealing with a lot of issues with overflow and not having enough space for their employees to park. We also have a school pool program where we help connect schools with other, so parents with other parents. And that's really helpful for charter schools, private schools, when there's school bus issues, driver shortages, things to that extent. What I'm most excited to talk to you guys today about is our County Connects program. We have, so first of all, we also promote Anita's program and Bats in the community. So when we go to community events and when we actually work with employers, we educate people in Boone County on those services that Anita's program offers as well. We provide regional meetings on a quarterly basis for all of the transportation providers to discuss, share best practices. But we just launched a redesign of a program with Secoa, Call My Freedom. And with that program is the first time ever, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, anyone in this county at the age of 60 or over, or anybody with a disability can participate. So what it is, is CERTA subsidize, uses our federal grant dollars and some state PMTF funding, and basically funds those trips. The commuter would, the client would pay 25% of the trip cost, but they can use that within Boone County, or they can use that to cross into another county line. And so when Anita's program doesn't operate seven days a week and at night, this is a great supplemental program. We also secure federal and state funding to launch transportation initiatives. You may be familiar with the Whitestown Connector. That was, we actually provided over a half million dollars in startup funds for that program. We promote that service. We work with Whitestown specifically and the EID now to manage that service. And we're actually in the process of doing, hopefully, a redesign to connect that to a new connection place for better efficiency and for more connectivity to those warehouses. So I left you a lot of information on in your folders, but again, please take some time to review it. Let me know if you have questions. And thank you for having me here today.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Apple Business Manager Update. Sean.
Sean Ram, Boone County IT. It's pretty straightforward. Basically, Apple will allow us to have one account as a county or a business, if you will. And several years ago, when the county went to the electronic poll books, the former clerk signed up for an Apple account for the county. And now that we're looking at doing some other things with that solution, we need to have one account. Since she's no longer here, I need to transfer ownership, if you will, of that account to someone else. Apple's told us all we need to do is submit a letter requesting that be done to an executive. I already sent the document or the information to Beth. I'm having a county letter, had obviously. We recommended having Tim be that person, since he's obviously on the technology board. And we can then, they'll transfer it to his email account, basically. And then we can work on setting up other accounts as well. You'll need to get it off of Jessica's account, basically, so that we can do some other things. So there's no cost or anything, or we're not signing up to a contractor or anything like that. It's just transferring the ownership of the account, basically, to someone else that's still working for the county, obviously.
Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Thank you. Max, Appidavit for GM Development Draw Request Number 028.
Yes, that is the, the draw request for the Justice Center project, an amount of $578,099.08. That draws to GM Development.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same.
Did you make a second?
Yeah.
I did. Yes, I'm sorry. I was facing the wrong direction.
That's okay.
Okay, Max, next up is Indy's Pro Graphics, PO Number 1049.
Yeah, this is a, I guess, approval of the quote for interior signage for the jail. They're doing all of this signage in the secure areas of the new Justice Center for the amount of 4,653.07.
Move to approve.
Second.
Does that be Ked out of the bond or the?
That is.
It's out of the 1233.
I heard a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
The next few I have are all payment recommendations from Veritas. The first one is for Sharp. It's their first payment request for $49,200. Recommendation, sorry.
Move to approve.
And that is out of 1233 again.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Are these the ones that were submitted on the additional for the council meeting?
Cannot, no. The additional for the council meeting was only like $8,000. These were already.
Are these already uncovered?
These were uncovered, correct. Next one is at 1233 again. This is for central restaurant supply, $31,515.05.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Veritas Group, LOR Number 160, Skilled Solutions, invoice number 658.
Okay, Skilled Solutions, yeah, they are the ones working in central dispatch or central control in jail. And it is a payment recommendation for $15,698 out of 4614.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
I think the last one I have today is for ASI. ASI is doing our exterior signage and signage inside the office areas. This payment recommendation is for $14,680 out of 1233.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Max. Next up, Boone County, CCMG 2025-01, DES number 2500111.
Nick Mar, Boone County Highway. I may love all your DES numbers and all my other acronyms that I have. So CCMG is Community Crossings Matching Grant. We were recently awarded the funds for the two projects that we just opened bids for. And when we get awarded the funding, they send an agreement for execution. It says that we will use those, it says a lot of stuff, it's several pages long, but essentially that we're going to use those funds for those specific projects that we're restricted to. So they send you a DocuSign request for execute, DocuSign to execute that agreement that we will use those funds as we are awarded. So this is requesting ratification. You actually signed two agreements, I think. The first one is the 111, the DES number ends in 111. That's for Bridge 44, the rehabilitation project. We're adding a concrete deck on top of existing box beams. That bridge is on County Road 400 East, north of 750 North. The total amount in DOT will match on that is $204,007.50. And they'll, that's the maximum they'll allow. And that total, what'll end up being the amount that they actually will pay us will be 50% of the lowest bid that we just opened. So they'll pay 50% of construction. So that was one of them that you opened, or that you executed. And then the other one was for, for DES number that ends in 112. And we were awarded $222,500 for that project. It is the Pineview Drive, small structure we just opened this morning also. It's a similar situation. It goes off the amount that we actually bid the project for. They won't give us $222,000 unless our project is more than 50% of that cost. So requesting ratification of both of those agreements.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, BFS, BFS Task Order 56.
So BFS is a civil engineering consultant that we use for construction inspection frequently for locally funded projects. They are in the area working on several of these other permits. So we have large permit projects, mainly utilities that are getting installed in right of ways. Brought these task orders previously for execution of these. This is construction oversight during a utility installation project that is in the right of way. And they will oversee that for us, and we will pay their invoices. And then we get reimbursed by the consultant, by the contractor that's doing the work, or whoever submitted the permits as part of the permit conditions due to the substantial amount of work that they're doing. This specific permit is for fiber installation. It's going from State Road 32. It's running all the way to 421 along County Road 100 North. So it's in between 32 and 100 North, mainly along the right of way of 100 North. They're actually running two lines. This is for the Meta Project. The utility company will be LTS Telecommunication Services. It is a significant project. The total amount of the construction inspection not to exceed is $35,000. We will pay for this out of operations fund, out of permit fees fund, and then get reimbursed by the LTS Telecommunication Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. INDOT ULD Letter of Acknowledgement.
So another unofficial local detour. I brought four of these to this board last year. Now there's another project that has come up that INDOT is performing. They're planning to close State Road 32 between State Road 75 and 1175 West. It's intended to be a short-term closure for small structure replacements. There's several of them. Right now, they intend the project to be totally, closure of 32 would be 20 days. Detour would be County Road 100 South from State Road 75 to 1175 West, and then back to State Road 32 on 1175 West. So unofficial local detour is a local route that is anticipated to be used during the closure. They have an official detour. They use a 75 to State, to Interstate 74, back to 32, which we prefer everyone use. However, we know that local traffic, and many people disregard all the signs of barricades and find the last possible place they can get to before they have to turn around. And in our case, baseline road's a gravel road, has several tight bins in it. The best likely straight route that'll get used is 100 South and 1175 West. We can add our own additional barricades on baseline road. Frequently, what we have when these closures happen is the first week or so is pretty rough with cars trying to find their fastest route around. It's likely they'll settle on 100 South and State Road and 1175 West. So this acknowledgement letter is required to send to INDOT. It says, we acknowledge there's going to be, this will be the unofficial local detour. Any damages or costs that we incur on this route, we can seek reimbursement from INDOT for. We only, we only get reimbursed for the, for the, anything that occurs on the unofficial local detour.
I saw somebody driving around barricades out in the grass this morning on the way here. So I'm, I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, I failed to mention that the earliest order after on that is April 7th, so coming
very soon for that closure. We found out about it since the last commissioner meeting and were able to get this letter of acknowledgement. There is significant concerns with the State Road 32 closure. It's the busiest one of all of our state roads that run through. There's a lot of heavy traffic that uses that roadway to get between 65 and 74. We expect there to be a lot of unhappy, motors that will not appreciate that closure. So we are not looking forward to that. Hope it is minimized as much as possible, although we have no control over it.
There'll be a lot of citizens that will not be happy with that either, with all the traffic coming past.
People that live on those county roads, anywhere around there are going to get impacted. People just find a route and use it. It doesn't matter what condition it is, gravel road, whether it's straight, whether it actually gets you around the closure. That's frequently what I run into. They drive, they think they're going to get around, and they land, and they're still in between a closure. In this case, there's several small structures. It's going to be a significant impact.
I had a motion and a second. Do I still have a motion and a second on this? Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay. DES 2301599, Bridge 162, INDOT LPA Construction Agreement.
I'm just going to start writing acronyms for everything.
I am, I'm telling you, I'm getting good at this.
So this is, projects, all INDOT projects get a designation number, which is where the DES number comes from. As soon as we're awarded federal funds, they give a DES number. And that's how they identify that project from beginning to end throughout all of their systems. So this particular one is Bridge 162. It's on County Road 500 South, east of County Road 50 East. We were awarded federal funds for the construction, construction inspection phases. What, where we are in the project on this one, is it's still ongoing with the, another acronym, the NEBA Document, National Environmental Protection Act, which is required when you use federal funds. But this particular agreement, after we've been awarded and we're to this, the stage three of plan submittal, they sent an agreement for their portion of the federal dollars for construction. So they don't really give us a notice of when that's going to happen. They just said, hey, we send you a DocuSign, it needs to be executed. We were awarded the funds. That agreement essentially says they are going to pay their, their 80% match. What they said they were going to give us, this is the agreement that now they have signed that says that we will pay those funds when we get to construction. So you were sent that. This is a ratification also, similar to the community crossing agreements. It is an INDOT agreement that we can't really modify any of the language. But once you get it ratified, then it works its way through the Department of Administration, a couple other state departments, and eventually we'll get a fully executed agreement. a couple other state departments, and eventually we'll get a fully executed agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay. DES 2300091, Bridge Inspection, NDOT LPA Reimburse Agreement.
So this particular one is a little bit different than the previous one. This is a NDOT, administers the federal funds for all of our bridge inspections. We're federally required to inspect all bridges over 20 feet in length every two years. They run this in a four-year cycle. And we had gone through the selection process to select our consultant for the next four year cycle, which starts in September of this year. There's many steps to this whole process. We selected the consultant, and then we submit everything to NDOT. And there's a few more things that have to happen, and then eventually we get a reimbursement agreement. So we entered into an agreement with the consultant for the full amount. It's going to take over the next four years to do all the inspection. And then NDOT agrees to pay 80% of that amount. This agreement is them agreeing to pay 80% of the amount that we have in agreement with the consultant. So it's called an NDOT LPA. LPA is Local Public Agency. So we are the LPA. And NDOT is Indian Department of Transportation, now agreeing to get our reimbursement dollars. So this particular one was also a ratification. It was sent via DocuSign to Scott for execution. So this one needs ratified also.
Move to ratify.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Next up, change of the commissioner meeting, April 7th, the meeting date.
I believe the proposal is to move it to April 14th. Is that correct?
Yes.
I have a question before you guys vote on that.
Yes ma'am.
Debbie Cram, auditor. When you guys move meetings, you do realize that pushes payments out a week? So right now, we're looking, because you changed the March meeting, and you're changing the April meeting, that we've got four weeks in between payments. What, what, what are you going to do? I know we've got contractors that can't wait. It'll technically could be five weeks by the time you put them in the mail, once they're approved.
Does this fall under the preapproval of claims?
That's, I mean, I don't know. You can ratify them, I guess, but that's up to you guys.
Yeah, I mean, we have it, we have an ordinance in effect. Obviously, you sent it to me. That authorizes that claims be paid ahead of time and then subsequently ratified. So as long as it falls within that.
Some of them don't.
Right. Well, such as, because if they're contractor payments, though, contractor payments should fall under.
Contractor payments should, but then you've also got some that would be like a culligan or, I mean, there's some.
I mean, I don't have it memorized, forgive me, but some of it also says that we can pre, we can prepay so we don't have any penalties, we don't pay any interest. So if it falls under any of the separate categories, so we're not going to be penalized for something. Contractors are obviously included.
Right.
Something like a culligan's water payment. If, if we're going to be penalized, we don't pay it, that would also fall under the preapproval.
They don't put all culligan payments through prepay, which is what they're talking about. They're in regular claims.
They'll have, they would have to be pivoted, right? They'd have to be moved. I don't know the, I, I don't know all of our forms well enough to know what the specific Excel spreadsheet is for which specific payment, but it's statutorily allowed to prepay these claims, so I don't know why there would be a problem.
Hi, Carol Cunningham, Surire. This is what I spoke with you guys about this morning. I, I know what we were talking about. I think one of the things that you were saying that we already have the approval for is the prepays, and those can be ratified. So we can turn those with, when we have a contract with a contractor. We can turn those in on Wednesday, get paid on Friday, and those are the ones, I think, that you have that, that ordinance for. So what we have is just our general contractor for maintenance work. He may do five projects. It's not that we contracted directly with him, you know, and had a contract signed with him on this is the amount, like we do with bridges and our other special projects that we have contracts with. This is maintenance that we have. And that's where we seen it, that when we're pushing meetings around, we turn that claim in, and two weeks later we get paid out. It did make it kind of difficult last week when we had to tell the contractors. It, the dates are all set at the beginning of the year, when we turn payments, or when we turn claims in, and when we're going to pay those out. So last week, we had to make a call to all of our contractors and any businesses that we do business with and tell them, we would not be sending those claims out until this Monday. Our concern with the next one is with that five Mondays for this month, we would be four weeks out in sending them, since we're not. But it also causes a problem that when we turn in claims next time, maybe, how does that shift if we're moving the dates around? So that's where I'd ask you, can we, in the past and not probably since Debbie's been here, a long time ago, long, long time ago, because we haven't had any board meetings move around, but years ago, if we were going to have that issue, we would make it to where Debbie's already sent commissioners all of those claims reports. If you found one that you didn't like, you can maybe tell her not to hope, not to pass it, or she would do it herself. But if nobody disagrees with that, she can go ahead and make that payment on that regular time, and then you could ratify it at the next meeting. That's the ones that we're asking, if you can, if we can do that.
I still think that, I still think that falls under.
You think it falls under?
I still think it's still payment to a contractor. I still think it's preapproval of claims. So it might, now, it might require working with the auditor to make sure it's on the correct form. There's a different form for regular payments versus prepayments, but it's, it's still.
Regular payments that we're asking that it not be held because there's not a mission of meaning. We are able to release those, and you can ratify it. That's what we're concerned about.
I, I see your points on, on doing that. And I think your, your idea, or not idea, the way you guys do it, good way, is send those to us on that before then. And then if there's a problem with one, then we can say it. If, if we don't say anything, then it's approved. I mean, I think we should respond to each one of those. And I'm terrible about that, and I'll admit that.
You all three are.
But, but I, but I say.
Nobody responds.
If, if we can, if we can go that direction to approve those then, and then we send you an email back that I approved all those to go forward?
At least all the meetings that are changed.
Or can you at least let me know in an email that they need to approve?
Yes.
Please, and I will make sure that that happens.
Yes, she does.
Because there are, there's lots of emails that come through with claims. So making sure that I understand which ones need to be ahead versus which ones will be and ratified versus which ones will be subsequently approved.
Yeah, we can do that. Let me start my presentation.
Thank you.
Very good points, I'm glad you brought this up.
Would it be one for the whole, the whole bundle? No, we would just do claims.
It's, I'm saying, just.
Bundle of claims.
Yeah, I thought it was one email that said preapproval, got it. That would be outstanding.
Yep.
And I know the rest of them.
Okay.
You need to vote.
Looking for a motion.
Yeah, you need to vote.
I'll make a motion that we move the April 7th commissioner meeting date to April 14th.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Legal counsel, do we, sorry. But, but do we need to make any motion of how we're going to handle this? So that's on record, or?
No, that's already in ordinance. The preapproval of claims is already in ordinance in it, that's a fact.
All right.
Okay. Offer to new hire, executive administrator.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the offer.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Okay. We had an added, the EXOS IT agreement was added to the agenda today.
Yes, that, that was my, my addition to the agenda this morning, first thing, because I've had several phone calls from elected officials on how this contract is. I, I know that when we, when we met with our insurance company and, and talked about all that, is that the cybersecurity assessment was what they suggested we do. And this grew into another portion of that. And I've got a lot of, several elected officials that are very concerned about that, and the protection of the, of everything that's in there, whether it's Sheriff's Department, prosecutor, all of those that, that, that are included in that, that cannot be released. And so, and, and I've met with IT a couple times, phone calls last week, several times of, of talking about this, and so that's why I brought this up, because I think we need to discuss this again. And I want to hear the input of the elected officials that are, are in the middle of this, that'll mean in a bad way, that are involved with this, and have, have said to me several times that, that we need to change this.
We're going right up here, shouldn't we? Jennifer Lastley is the only one in her office due to illness, and so she's listening, but that's the only reason she's not here.
I think us as elected officials, auditor, clerk, recorder, treasurer, surveyor, and assessor. For one, I know that's an IT assessment. We don't really know what that means, but I can tell the three of you that you don't know what my IT needs are in my office. I feel like we've been left out of the loop. I feel we should have been maybe part of this discussion. You're wanting to do an IT assessment, but yet you don't know what we do. You don't know what my IT needs are. First and foremost, I know Santi is off-site. That won't work for my office. I mean, I can just tell you that right now. Out of anything else, that will not work for my office. When we have an IT issue, we need it done right away. I can't wait 12 hours, six hours, for somebody to show up. Right now, we call and somebody's right there. So I know that's a big issue for me. Guts does support several of our softwares in my office. Having somebody else to learn those softwares would be time-consuming, and I don't think that would benefit my office at all. So I'm a little concerned about what this IT assess, where this IT assessment is going, and what it's going to do at the end of this.
And regarding the IT assessment for me, like we've discussed this, the confidentiality, like, I don't know, I know I've spoken to Scott about this, but like adoptions, chins, terminations, criminal cases. I mean, there's all kinds of information that comes in that is sealed, that you guys can't have access. And I don't plan to or want to have the staffs to sit right there and be like, okay. I mean, it would have to be Melissa or I. And like, for me, I mean, you can ask Sean, my IT intelligence is control, delete, like, let's shut down and restart. So if they came in and they said, hey, we need this, 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 my response is going to be, like, what are you asking me for? Which is a lot of times, I, I will ask Sean that. He'll say, hey, we're meeting for this. And I'll say, well, what is that? Like, break it down to me, like, in my terms. And he does. There's lots of things with IT that they help out with different stuff. All this new addresses that come in. Like, we can call Terry, and we can walk over to Eric and be like, hey, just let you know, we're trying to add this address for this precinct. You know, we have to re-precinct this year, like, and boom. Terry's like, okay, let me go here and figure this out, and then she'll send us in all these addresses. Because when they create these subdivisions, they might add a home here, and add a home here, and add a home here. But we have to have all these things in because of, as people move in, but registrations have to be updated. We have to create the precinct, and we have to do that. So there's a lot of stuff that I don't understand on the IT side, and I don't feel like it's my job to understand. I feel like that's where I'm at. I just want to make sure that we're secure in our office, like, on everything. And so, when I heard about it, I was confused, and I reached out.
I would be honest with you, one of the biggest concerns I think everyone has had is the lack of communication on this. All of a sudden, you get an email, or was it an email or a notification that, and no, Max, we know that you're just, was the courier, was going to be bringing people into offices to assess the IT situation, to assess what their needs were on something nobody even knew about. And I think that is not even close to being appropriate or okay, because we are very careful of information that, that we have, especially confidential information. So the good news for you guys, we're just not going to let people walk in that we're not aware of, or even know, understand what it's about. And so, you know, originally, the whole talk was, it was simply because there was going to be an assessment for cybersecurity. Then that changed, and then nobody, again, was notified. I mean, and in all fairness to Max, he, I don't know that he's been assessed of everything either. He just simply was the courier, I think, to bring them around to what, to the various offices. And I know, and if I'm right, Debbie, your office, you weren't even there, and, and the, these people came in. So the point is this, is that if it's not necessary, there's no reason for us to be doing it and spending the extra money outside of the cyber issue. But even if with that, please let, you know, maybe do an email. I don't, you might have to do all the emails too. But, you know, to say, this is what's going to happen, this is why, or have a meeting to say, this is what we want to do, this is how we want to do it, what do you guys think? And then it's like, what's the easiest way for us to do that, you know, assessment? And honestly, I, I think we're all kind of on the same page also. You know, our go-to people are the GUTS people. You know, I can tell you what our, what programs are. I don't have, I'm not associated with GUTS as much, but it's just the whole concept of everything. I have other programs in my office. But if, they, they have to be able to give the detailed security issues that are there that we don't even have access to. But our point is, we're going to protect everything that is in, under our responsibilities. That's what we're elected to do. And so we need the communication issue to be better. And if you're going to send people in, we need to, you know, we need to know when, where, and why. But the cybersecurity issue isn't anything anyone has a concern about. The rest of it presents huge problems.
I would agree with the intel that the Sheriff's Office has. IDEX, NCIC, ongoing investigations inside the Sheriff's Office. I agree with the ladies behind me and elected officials. And also to speak on behalf of GUTS, they've been our vendor for over 30 years, or at least since 95, since I've been here. And they've done an outstanding job. I can speak to that, not only for myself, but for staff and our divisions, whether it be Corrections or Communications. If you call those people at 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning, they're answering the phone call. And they send somebody out right away. So I would just like to make sure that we are notified, just so we can set up. I don't have a problem with audit. I would be against doing anything to GUTS at this time, just because of all the knowledge they have in our office, and taking a chance shutting something down and putting this county in a state of emergency. So, thank you.
I, I'm not going to take up your time. I'm just saying.
No, you're fine.
Everything they said is kind of what we are. We work closely with GUTS, we've not had an issue with GUTS. So if that's kind of where we're going, I'm not kind of in support of that. If it's cybersecurity, there's a security thing that where we're going to say to GUTS, hey, we need to do this, this, and this to make us, you know, that these, these guys found something that we need to do better with that, then so be it. But if it's all to change, I don't think that any of us are going to be in support of, of that. We agree with the service that we're getting, and we want to stay with that. So we support them that way.
Nicky, do you have?
I agree. I have the county's financial records, so I think that's huge. That needs to, to be confidential, and I, I like what GUTS does, and don't have any issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so back to the reason why I added this to the agenda is because I think that we have a, the cybersecurity assessment is what needs to be done. It's been done in the past, and, and I think that you need to reevaluate why we had the problem back in October of last year, I think. It, it never, am I correct on that? September, sorry. There we go. So we've got to reassess that, and, and what, what happened. I have no clue on it, nor will I ever, because that's, those programs are way above and I have no clue on it, nor will I ever, because those programs are way above and beyond me and, but I know that you, your team has gone through everything on this and, but it's always good to bring in an outside company to reevaluate that, to see if they can find anything wrong. I think that's a good idea. On the IT side of it, I think we heard here, I started to say tonight, sorry, it's not that long yet, this afternoon, or this morning, this morning, on how that IT portion of that contract is going too far. And so that's why I brought this up, because I talked to a lot of you last week and I know that there's a huge concern on this and I wanted to hear what each one of you had to say this morning. So that's why I added this to our agenda this morning with this. Before I, before I make any motion or anything, I want to turn it over to the other two commissioners. Do you want to say anything about the conversations that were mentioned?
Well, as a 30-plus-year member of working with the county and especially the Sheriff's Department, I know how important it is to have very tight security on a lot of things that are said, investigations are going on, names involved, you know, we're all innocent until proven guilty, even though we're working a case type of thing. But I see, I see both sides of this. This has been tough. My phone's been ringing a lot too and I'm listening to everybody. I think it would be good, we need to move forward with that cybersecurity. I'm all, I'm all for that. Maybe we take a step back, get a breath and see what the other is. All this ever was going to be, as far as I know, is an assessment. What's going on? What can be fixed? Where are their problems? Where are their good things to bring it to everybody's attention and keep everybody competitive, you know, as a competitive nature too for pricing on things? So nobody was going anywhere or that's, I have, I have nothing to add to any of that. I know that it sounds like you had some concerns that we were moving into another realm other than just an assessment and that's, that's not anything that I know anything about. So that's my two cents.
That's 100% correct. It's an assessment. The whole purpose of doing this is an assessment so that if there's improvements that can be made, that's it. I mean, I, there's no, there's no intention to replace that. The idea, the idea is to perform a complete assessment. I think if we don't perform a complete assessment, then we're going to lose out on the benefit of whatever information that a full assessment could provide. I've had meetings with Max, I've had meetings with Guts. There's, there has been no concerns raised in those meetings. There's been multiple meetings. If we need to have a separate meeting with elected officials just so they understand what's going on, then let's do that, 100%. But we voted on this in December, December 16th. It was approved three to zero. In January, we moved, we approved a ratification of a signature just to simply allow it to be paid with ARPA funds. So I find it a little bit interesting that all of a sudden we want to back off of information that would benefit our IT. There's no, it's, it's the same conversation about the medical insurance. All we're doing is acquiring information to make the county operate better. That is it. All these insinuations that it's going to go beyond that are just, they're absurd. Go ahead, Debbie.
I'm going to reiterate the issue that's really here, is the fact that you, what you just said was not been said to one other elected official in this room. Nobody knew what was coming and even knew that it was coming on Friday. Am I correct here with everybody? Nobody. So you now, so your thought process on having a conversation with the elected officials is right on point.
Right.
So that should have happened before instead of after. So my thought proposal would be at this point, if you want to go do the cyber thing, then we've got more than enough time to sit down and evaluate what that other information evaluation is going to be, how it's going to affect people, the safety procedures put in place. I just think that at this point in time, there's too many questions that we all have that we're entitled to ask because I think we're supposed to be working together as a team. And when it involves our office directly and the information that we are responsible for by law, I think that we should have more input into exactly how the procedure is going to go and how the cybersecurity is not a problem for anyone. The rest of it needs to be put off, let's get it figured out. It can always be done, but the turmoil and the confusion that's existing right now is just not good. There needs to be more clarification on that issue. And that's what we're asking for at this point in time.
Transparency.
Transparency, that's a good point.
Well, I would make a motion that we table this item so that we can have a meeting with the elected officials if there's, if that needs to occur, then let's do it. I don't think there's any reason to change what we're already under contract to do. Because there's clearly a misunderstanding. So I don't, I don't want to make, I don't want to make a decision or have us make a decision on something that's completely misunderstood. Let's, let's, let's clear up any of that confusion and then make a decision. So I'll make a motion that we table this item.
I will not second that.
What's the harm in a sec, or in a table if we, what's, or maybe if we let them go ahead with the cyber part and hold up on the other and table that, would that be?
That, that's my whole point in today's, is that I have no problem with the cybersecurity assessment, but I have a huge problem with the IT and you heard everyone in this room talk about that. And so if you're going to let this die, let the motion die because of a lack of second, then I will make the motion, a different motion on this.
Okay. Is there a second? Motion dies.
Therefore, my motion will be to continue the cybersecurity assessment with XO, XOs and to pull the IT out of that contract for the $20,000 that is in there and only have the cybersecurity assessment move forward. Then we can reevaluate the other portion when everyone is involved with.
That's essentially what tabling this decision does. You're wanting to make a motion based on the misunderstanding that exists out there. So if we just table the issue and clear up that misunderstanding, I think that potentially resolves the issue. So I'm going to put the motion to table it back on the table.
I guess I'm confused as to your statement as a misunderstanding. There is no misunderstanding. You failed to notify any of us of what was going on. You contacted Max and you told Max he has to escort people into our office. First of all, ISATs, you have to be fingerprinted and everything else. Like there's only certain ways that you can access that. Can you give me, like, can you, Sean has had to take how many classes to even have access to the codes to, I mean, to get into, so that he can, but I mean, are you willing to provide? I want that information first before I say, okay, here you go.
That's fine.
So it does need to be tabled because you failed to.
Right, I agree.
You failed to.
I agree, it needs to be tabled.
It needs to.
That's my motion.
The assessment, no one has an issue with.
That's what, we're talking about an assessment.
I'm sorry, I'm misstating this. The cyber, cybersecurity, we have zero issue with. The assessment is where we do have, because each one of our offices require your different things. That requires you and I or Scott or Don to sit down to, for me to explain to you what goes on in my office. You can't assess something if you don't know.
It's, it's a company that does this and it's the exact same thing with other municipalities.
But a municipality doesn't take child support.
Municipalities, counties, I mean, they, they.
They do it out of state. Indiana's the only one that does child support with ISATs. So are they, do you have other counties in-state that you can show me that they've used? I mean, I need this information.
Okay.
So the assessment.
That's, that's fine, but why would we, why would we, why would we consider canceling a contract that's been in place for three, three-plus months and with the sole purpose of improving IT for the county?
Tim, I'm going to call the spade the spade and you've had zero issues canceling contracts lately. So we can't really say.
I've had what?
Zero issues canceling contracts recently.
Zero issue, I don't know what that means.
That means like regarding the gas station, like the contracts regarding that, you haven't had an issue on that.
Well, right, because that was not for the benefit of people of Boone County. This would, an IT assessment, okay, how do the people benefit, how do the people of Boone County benefit from not having an assessment done for potential improvements to our IT services? Please explain to me how that's a benefit.
No, I'm not saying that, but it needs to be specialized and that's what I'm saying.
Okay, that's fine. If you have concerns, we want to address those concerns.
You want to address them now because you didn't want to address them.
I didn't know there were concerns.
On Friday.
I didn't know there were concerns. Did you call me on Thursday?
I've called you several times.
Yes, and we, and Beth brought up the nondisclosure. We had that looked into. I didn't get a call from you last Thursday.
But she shouldn't have had a call you last Thursday.
Well, if there.
But it should have been notified equally and been aware of it. That's the issue. And I did contact a commissioner regarding this and he wasn't advised of it. So, I mean.
Well.
I, no, I wasn't advised that anybody was going to be in my office on Friday. I was out last week on vacation. I feel like if you're doing an IT assessment and you're coming in my office to check out a board that controls all of IT, that perhaps IT should be involved and should escort, not a maintenance person, supervisor, whatever you call him. I mean, I really have a problem with that, that IT was not involved, that Sean or Pat or Dylan, somebody wasn't there to escort them in to tell us why they were there. My girls had no clue. They asked, Max didn't tell them. He came in, he left, no explanation. And of course, you know, my girls were like, I don't know what they did. They went to the bathroom. Okay, well, how do I know they're not manipulating something? Not that they are, but how do we know they're not? So those are my office concerns again.
Yeah, and I was advised we would receive an email on what it was that they wanted to look at and then we can help somebody advise it. And Max kind of got thrown in the middle. He's doing what?
Let me speak to Friday. Let me speak to Friday. Friday was an assessment of the physical equipment only. So it was our switches and switch rooms, server rooms and that. Both of the people that were with me went through our sheriff background check and they.
We didn't know that. I didn't know that.
It was just a, they didn't, we were not assessing anything in individual offices. We did go into your office and we went into Circuit Court, only because we have switch cabinets in those two rooms.
Right.
Apologize for not letting you know.
Are you IT?
What's that?
Are you IT though?
I'm escorting them to the rooms. Showing them where the equipment is.
On behalf of the commissioners?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning. Can I, can I try me in?
Well, he's an elected official, so Aaron wants to speak to you.
Aaron Williams. Good morning, Aaron Williams. I'm an elected official for the local county council. I'm also a member of the technology committee.
Hang on just a second, Aaron. We need to turn the volume up a little bit.
Good morning. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good morning. Aaron Williams, local county council, speaking as an elected official also on the technology committee. I've talked to the discussion today and heard the concern and definitely understand where everyone is coming from. From my understanding, the assessment that is being done is only a cybersecurity assessment. As someone who works in technology, cybersecurity assessments will not access any personal data. We typically call it in the industry PII, personal identifiable information. So I understand where all of our elected officials are coming from and all of the information that you retain in your personal offices. So individuals who are coming into your office would not be accessing that information directly during a cybersecurity assessment. I think Max actually just alluded to it. They were coming in more than likely to look at the physical infrastructure. So that is the switches and if Max is still standing there, that was part of the agreement. They actually had to come in and look at the physical infrastructure to see what was going on. I think another part of this is what we discussed also in the technology agreement that we looked at and Beth Copley can confirm this as legal counsel. There's actually a confidentiality agreement that most vendors will have with this, that they are covered under identification costs. So that would happen, that's just par for the course. In an assessment of this nature, there's no need for anyone to access any kind of information from the prosecutor's office, the sheriff's office. There would be no need for them to even look at information for anyone in a cybersecurity assessment. That's not what they would need to do to do an assessment in general. If I could just put this in layman's terms, it's the equivalent of basically looking at your insurance for a car. So you're going to look at a new quote for insurance, they're going to ask your information, especially if you're adding your kids or you have them on your insurance. How many accidents have they been in? How many tickets have they gotten or received? When was this? When did it happen? And you want them to get as much information as possible so when they go out and they rebid this, they can give you the best quote possible. That is what the cybersecurity assessment essentially is doing. They're going to do a full assessment of our entire infrastructure and what's going on and come back and give a report. I see this with my customers at an enterprise level, happen on a day-to-day basis and it happens in government on a frequent basis. You do want a full assessment. You don't know what your vulnerabilities are unless you have a third party giving you that assessment and looking from the outside in. I know Guts has been a trusted partner of ours and I've used them and they've been, excuse me, they've been great to work with, but I hear where everyone is coming from and I think there's an opportunity here, wanted everything for better communication. But I can assure you from what I know and from what I've seen or what I've heard, they're not accessing information in your offices. There's no need to. If they want to access information, they're going to do it. I think someone said that they're off-site, they're going to access information remotely. They're not going to, there's no need for them to come on-site and access anything. But again, I'm just giving you from the insight that I know and have looked at the contract because I know there were concerns about what they could and couldn't do. And this is just what happens in the technology realm.
Okay, thank you. Brings us back to, you made a motion, there's a motion on the table. So we're back to Donnie's original motion. Could you please repeat that?
Yes, I will. My motion is to continue on with the cybersecurity assessment, but to delete the IT assessment. Yeah, so his motion is to modify the contract. I put, I'm putting a motion back on the table, back on to table this issue, because I think especially in, I mean, Aaron Williams works in the technology world. My motion is to table, which a motion to table should be considered first. It's in the rules of procedure we just passed this morning. So I'm putting the motion to table back on for consideration because Donnie's proposing to modify the contract, in my view, and I, based on a misunderstanding of what the contract is. So I think there's some discussion that needs to take place about what exactly the contract is, what exactly access, if any, is needed in these offices before we even consider modifying this. Because the whole purpose of this, again, there is nothing on the table, there is nothing on the table about replacing Guts. I mean, I've, I've heard the concerns about that. That is not what this is. The idea is to make, and it was stated in the meeting when I met, when I met with Guts earlier this year, look, I'm, I'm. nothing on the table about replacing guts, I mean, I, I've, I've heard the concerns about that. That is not what this is. The idea is to make, and it was, it was stated in the meeting when I went, when I met with Guts earlier this year, look, I'm, I'm an engineer. My work as an engineer, when I practiced regularly as engineer, got reviewed by other engineers. So I totally get the concerns, because I've lived them. this whole issue even being brought this morning is just a huge surprise, because it's a total 180 from everything that I've heard to date about this.
So even though that, that it's, was denied with that lack of a second?
Yeah, so based on the rules of procedure that you adopted this morning, Rule 15-5, a motion to table an agenda item may take precedence over a pending motion. If a motion to table is made and seconded, a vote shall be called. So a motion to table takes precedent over any other pending motion.
If it's seconded and.
If, it, it still has to be seconded.
And it wasn't the first time.
It was, and it got denied, but he has remaded.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know why, I don't know why we would make a decision this morning. What, what harm in there, to your point earlier, what harm in there is tabling this to have further discussion before we make what would be a hasty decision? I mean, we're gonna make a decision, potentially, without having these discussions. Why would we do that?
So he is asking to be reconsidered, his motion to table to be reconsidered, there has to be a second to continue it, if not. I don't think, are you an elected official?
A simple question, do you folks in your procedures follow Roberts' Rules of Order?
They follow the rules that they just adopted this morning.
Are those based on Roberts' Rules?
Some of them, yes.
Can you go back and address a motion, or consider a motion, that died when there's still a motion on the table that has not been addressed? Seconded, or, I mean, it's up for discussion.
Well, because there's a new motion. I didn't even know, I didn't even know what the motion, I didn't even know what was being considered.
I'm not allowed to do this, but if Donnie made a motion, and you haven't addressed it either by letting it die, or taking a vote on it, it's entirely improper to entertain another motion.
Not per the rules that they adopted this morning, sir. I'm not, I, I'm happy to have this conversation with you after, but I don't wanna do this, this is just not appropriate for this forum. But I'm, I'm more than happy to have this conversation. But at this point, according to the rules that they adopted, I understand it's a reconsideration, but it's still a motion to table. It has to have a second. If it doesn't, it dies, and then you go to Donnie's motion, so.
Did it already die?
I'm not, I, I really please, I don't wanna engage in debate, I really don't here.
So, so really, the question, I mean, let's just put the technical procedures aside. The real question is, do we wanna make a dis, a hasty decision before having a discussion to try to address these issues? That's the issue before us today. Are we gonna make a decision without even having this discussion?
Can I point out that Aaron stated his understanding was this was just a cybersecurity. So is he, I mean, with him having his, I mean, he knows his.
I, I think it just, it goes to the point that we need to have further discussion about what we're really doing. Because I, we're not gonna, we need to have further discussion, we're not gonna figure that out in this meeting this morning.
So, may I just insist, so there's two things, there's cybersecurity assessment, and then just the generalized assessment, correct? Are they, and if, you can tell me that, like, I can't ask questions if you want.
So as I read the master services agreement, it says IT and cybersecurity assessment.
Are they like billed at different rates, like there's one rate?
Yes, they're two different price points.
Okay, so, so it is, okay.
And there, and there may be potentially items in what they're calling the IT assessment. I mean, we kinda went through this discussion earlier. Potentially, if there's a specific item in there that we need to take out, well, maybe that's the case, I don't know. That's why we need to have this discussion.
I don't know what you're gonna do.
This pits me in the middle.
It's pretty simple.
I see both sides of this, obviously. Uh, I'm very concerned about, uh, all the elected officials having, having issues, some of them are very warranted, I know that.
So, so not to cut you off, but do you wanna have a discussion about those issues, or do you not? That's essentially what my motion is.
I think before we move forward, I would like to see some discussion. I, the cybersecurity, I wanna go with, but I think we all need to sit down and take a breath on the second part.
That's what my motion does.
And hi, his motion's on the table, is that correct?
It is on the table.
And I will second that motion.
Which is just to push this aside for another month, till the next meeting.
Well, to, to have discussion to address the issue.
I don't know if it's to push it aside, but it is, it is to table it until the next meeting to decide whether you're.
Right.
To.
That'll give everybody a chance to talk to everybody, and get everybody's concerns addressed. And the cybersecurity, I'd say, roll, let's go with that.
So the motion has that motion, so that's Scott's motion.
His motion is to take the whole thing.
No, that's not right, I'm sorry, but that's just not right, so. So Tim's motion is to, is to table this discussion, which would, which would allow the contract to stay as is. Right, it's authorized, it's been executed now twice. And it would allow the cyber, if they want to proceed with the cybersecurity, because they believe that there's a general consensus that that's okay, then that portion could proceed. We could, I could be, one of them could give authorization to this company to go ahead and proceed with that. It is the other part of it, we just decided there are two sections. The other part of it that he is requesting be tabled, so that you guys can have your meeting to discuss what is the scope of what that IT assessment is. Donnie's motion was to cancel that portion, Tim's is to table it, to have discussion to see what it even means. That seems to be the misunderstanding, we don't know what an IT assessment seems to mean.
So that's, it means that they, that that puts that company on hold, they don't do any more on that section.
Well, yeah, there's, 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 there's been concerns.
Cause it sounded like that you said they're gonna proceed as, as the contract.
That's what I, that's what my hangup has been sent up here, I'm hearing both of these guys, and I get it, that I didn't.
How about we say suspend? Motion to sus, well, it's to, okay. We've, we've said this so many different ways. You want to, you're, are you willing to agree to suspend the IT assessment portion to have further discussion on?
Well.
But proceed with as written the cyber?
I, I, I think that's essentially what we're doing with table, the, the elected officials have, we're not gonna barge on through when there's concerns, but, I mean.
So you're not gonna barge on through for any of it, or?
Well.
The cyber is not an issue.
Okay.
That's one thing that, and I apologize, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I shouldn't. Um, your contract says both of them.
Right.
So, the cyber portion of it is not an issue. You're gonna have to publicly say, I think in a motion or with the decision, that you're going to either suspend, or stop, or not do the IT thing until further discussion. You can't say we're just gonna move ahead and go, I mean, it's gotta be more defined than that, because we're gonna get caught in it again, if it's not.
Oh, okay, I, I can say that we table this and have a meeting to address the concerns before the IT assessment proceeds. How about that?
If it does. If it does.
Well, right, yeah, right.
At the next meeting, he could, you could reject it, decline it, delete it.
So I'll amend my motion to that.
I will second your motion.
So that allows them to move forward with the cybersecurity assessment, but not the IT.
Until we talk. All in favor?
Aye.
Was there a second?
He seconded.
Oh, you seconded, I'm sorry.
Okay, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same side?
Aye.
That was a tough one. Okay, that concludes our new business, staff reports, anybody from area plan? Capital investments, facilities? Health department? Highway department? Human resources? Oh, I'm sorry. I tried to get you beat out there, Nick, but it just didn't make it.
Uh, mine's really short, I just have a couple of updates on road closures. Uh, Bridge 84, which is 400 east, north of 100 north, that bridge did open, uh, reopened the traffic. Uh, State Route 47 is scheduled to close for a small structure replacement. Uh, May 12th is what they're telling us right now, it's an indot project that is just east of 39, so the unofficial local detour that we had approved last year is Victor Road, Victor Road and 750 north. And then we have two small structure projects getting ready to start, um, very soon, 650 west between 2 and 300 south is a small structure, JA 005, is, uh, could, could be starting very soon, 45 day closure, depending on the weather. And then County Road 1200 east, so County Line Road, south of 47, is scheduled to close. There's two small structures on that one, uh, those are all the small structures, ARP funded projects that were la, last year. So just wanna give you a heads up on some of them, that's all.
Hey Nick, while you're up there, do you have any utility issues going on on Route 50?
Do we have utility issues?
I mean, are there, yeah, what are the utilities doing?
There's a lot of utilities.
In my yard, what are utilities doing in my yard?
So we have.
Trying to get specific.
You're going to Coburn.
Well, there's a lot of utilities going, a lot of utility projects going on. So, where exactly which one is at which time? There's sewer line, uh, there was part of the, uh, project for the indot rest areas. Included running sewer line all the way to pasture house, um, down to the plant there at 275. Uh, there's also gas line relocation, uh, the interstate project is getting ready to start, um, and that's relocating at the interchange at 1, 141 exit, moving it up north of 300 north. So there's relocation work happening there, tree removal, utility relocation, so there's a lot of different parts happening, as well as the real broadband. So specifically which contractor, I'm not sure.
Well, gas, water, it's all, yes, thank you.
Human resources.
Sean, here on Boone County IT, just, uh, wanted to get authorization to release the RFP for the design, for the audiovisual improvements to this room. Uh, I sent off the email a couple of weeks ago for you guys, for the RFP itself, to you guys a couple of weeks ago for your review. Um, hadn't got any, uh, feedback at all, but I would just, you guys were good with me releasing it to the public, uh, so that the people can start working on it, basically.
Be wise for us to have a motion, would that be, am I correct?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, same side? Elected officials, I think everybody's already spoken.
Hey, I'd like to say one thing real quick. I, I know we're already an hour and 43 minutes in, but, um, since I was cut off in the last council meeting, I would just like to briefly discuss the, um, the, just the dollar figures around hiring an in-house attorney. So, I, I don't know exactly where I was cut off in the last meeting, but that has been provided to council that shows that we have spent up to, for, actually over $400,000, depending on what year you look at, for our former county attorney. Now, if our, if Beth were to do everything that our former county, county attorney does, that cost would be potentially, again, depending on which year you look at, but, but potentially be cut in half. So, potentially up to $200,000, so, um, if there's any other information that council needs in order to make this decision, because we're gonna be on month three in April, I would really appreciate if they would reach out to the commissioner's office so that we can make a decision and put this behind us at the April meeting. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you, sir. Any other elected officials? Public comment?
So, because the rules of procedure were just adopted, and I didn't have an opportunity to post these outside, something has, we have to read something by state statute, we have to read these rules now. But we'll post them outside for people to be able to know moving forward, so we all are on the same page. Public comment will only be permitted for in-person attendees. When public comment is permitted, attendees shall do the following, approach the podium, state his or her name and address. If you're an elected official, you can state your business. Be limited to three minutes, try not to present new points, and not repeat comments from previous speakers. Presiding officer shall have full authority to maintain order during a meeting with respect to attendees and the elected officials. No participant may speak more than once. All statements shall be directed to the board. Participants may not question commissioners individually. If deemed necessary, the presiding officer has full authority to issue warnings to attendees who disrupt a meeting. If an attendee continues to disrupt a meeting despite receiving two warnings from the presiding officer, the presiding officer may, upon issuing the third warning, direct the attendee to leave, and a law enforcement officer to remove the attendee from the meeting. If the attendee refuses to leave when directed by the presiding member for a violation of these rules and or policy governing the conduct of the meeting. Nothing in this section should be construed to prohibit a law enforcement officer from immediately removing an attendee from a meeting if the removal of the attendee is necessary to maintain order or assure the safety of another person, the attendee commits a criminal offense, the attendee violates the rules or policies governing the conduct of the meeting as adopted by the commissioners. And then finally, the commissioners will post these in a visible area, or make this announcement at the beginning of every meeting.
Golly, that, where they can take you out when they want to, really makes me nervous, I'm just saying.
That's actually states, the state adopted, last year the General Assembly adopted decorum, because some meetings are getting so out of hand.
Well, I can't imagine that. Debbie Ottinger, uh, Boone County resident, 1126 Berry Drive, loved in Indiana, 46052, I'm six foot two, 120, 29. Um, I am here on older business, because at this time, I would like all of you to join me in singing happy birthday to our sheriff. Are you ready? Ready? Ready, ready, go.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear sheriff. Happy birthday to you.
35 years old. Thank you. I had nothing to do with that shirt, sir. That was across between sheriff and sheriff.
Sheriff probably weighs 120 pounds. I don't know about that.
Okay, any other public comment? Thank you. Approval of claims? Acknowledgement?
Uh, I'd, I'd, I'd move to approve claims.
Second.
I'm sorry. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, same side? My bad, sir. Uh, acknowledgement of correspondence?
Uh, well, if you give me just a second, we actually have connection.
I'm sorry.
It looks like we just received a couple, uh, travelers notice about policies, so. That's it, I'll, I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, motion, adjourned, accepted, and we're out.